And I promise we'll all be out of here by 11 o'clock tonight. So the first order of business is to call the meeting to order and roll call.
Summers.
Here.
Dr. Hans.
Yeah.
Dr. Arrington. Ms. Newman. Dr. Taub.
Here.
Dr. Klotz.
Here.
Ms. Shulman.
Here.
Mr. Rubin.
Here.
Mr. Landsman. Mr. Furman is absent with notice. Ms. Kucherik.
Thank you very much for that. And first item of order is public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll also have an opportunity later in the meeting to have public comment. The next item is a policy item. A customized employment information purposes only. Francisco Gamboa.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Yes, okay, great. Well, I'm excited to be here to give an update on our customized employment program that we have here in Oakland County. My name is Francisco Gamboa and I'm the service network analyst, one of the service network analysts on the service network team, and I oversee our employment efforts. So I'm probably somewhat familiar to some of you as I've probably given a couple of updates over the years on employment. So I'm excited to be here. Obviously, I'm very passionate about employment and we have a lot of exciting and good work going on around increasing competitive integrated employment opportunities for those that we serve. So before I get into customized employment, I just want to pause real quickly and talk about employment and the impact that employment has. Some of you may have heard that employment is a social determinant. What that means is that it has a wide and far-reaching impact on lives of individuals that we support, really anybody's lives. I think all we have to do is look at our own lives and the important role, the critical role that employment plays. If we think about having opportunities for growth, opportunities for advancement personally and professionally, social connectedness, the relationships that we develop, really a lot of that is because of employment, how we fit into the communities, how we identify our roles. So it's something that really is a huge impact and a huge barrier, you can imagine, for those that aren't able to achieve their goals of employment. That's why we're very passionate here at Oakland Community Health Network to increase those employment opportunities for those that we serve. We know that we have a large number of individuals that want to work, and so we're looking at ways to make that dream happen for them. That's one of the reasons why we looked at customized employment a few years ago, because we wanted to look at identifying other programs, other opportunities that we thought would have benefit to Oakland County and the individuals that we support, again, so they could achieve those competitive integrated employment opportunities. You may hear me say competitive or individually, individual integrated employment. I just want to pause real quickly and clarify. That means jobs just like you or I would have in the community. So these are not segregated settings. This is minimum wage, working alongside individuals just like you or I would have with or without disabilities. So it's a radical departure for some. This is something that we've been promoting a lot the last few years. So the outcome for customized employment is integrated employment opportunities. So that's important to remember. I don't know if we want to, Emily, are you doing the slides or? Oh, thanks, Shawty. Hi, thanks. So as I mentioned, customized employment is a promising practice that we developed, developed, I wish. We're not, we're excited to have it here, but I can't take credit for developing customized employment. But we were excited to bring it here. It's an employment model that differs from more traditional supported employment in that it's looking at the jobs within the jobs. So if we think about traditional employment programs, it's typically looking at jobs that are posted, that are already developed, and so it's a competitive process. You would find a job that's posted, you would be working with an individual, you would see if that's a good fit, and then you would have that individual apply and support them through the process of becoming employed and after they become employed so they can receive job supports as necessary. So customized employment is typically something that is reserved for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And again, it's designed to create a specific match between the employer and the job seeker. So again, if we go into the customization portion, that's looking at an employer that may have unmet needs. So they have tasks that are a benefit to the employer, but they don't have an individual there performing those tasks, or they have individuals that are working and they have a number of tasks, some of which take away from their primary tasks, and it's an impediment. So when we talk about customizing a position and customized employment, we're looking at creating a new position that's a match for the individual that we're supporting. So it's kind of that win-win scenario. The Oakland Customized Choices, Oakland Customized Employment Choices Program, that's what we call our customized employment program. Again, that assists individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities who need supports to obtain and maintain employment and who want to work a minimum of 12 hours a week or more. So we began our customized employment program. It was a partnership that we developed with MRS and FY17. So this is beginning our third year of our customized employment model, and it's something that we were very fortunate, we were able to use existing resources that we had. We have a cash transfer agreement that we've had for a number of years with MRS. We were able to specify and use those funds for the creation of this customized employment program. So it's very rare, I think, almost unheard of, that you can bring a new employment model, a new service for probably just about anything, and not bear additional costs. So it was a very exciting opportunity to leverage those existing funds in a manner that we thought would provide better impact and better outcomes for those that we serve. We're also very fortunate that we have a good partner like MRS that sees the value in customized employment and that we also have a very strong direct service provider network. These are the providers that are actually providing the services to the individuals receiving customized employment services. So we have JVS, Judson Center, and New Horizons are the three providers that are actually providing the customized employment services. So those may be familiar names to some of you. They're very well established. They have a high reputation for providing high-quality services. So again, we have a lot of key partners in this customized employment model, which really adds to the benefit to those that we serve. So if we take a look at the numbers, one of the things that I was always concerned when we started this program was referrals. I mentioned, obviously, that we have a lot of individuals that are interested in work, but I wasn't sure how promoting the model would go. How would we get the word out there? How would people learn about it? So in FY17, we worked very hard to market and promote customized employment. So we actually had more referrals than expected. We've had 96 referrals so far to date. That's October 2016 to November of 2018. Out of those 96 referrals, individuals, we've had 22 that have become employed. That's about 23% of those that have become employed, 73% of those have maintained their employment. So that's an important factor because we're looking at, did we make a good match for the individual? So what does that retention look like? One of the things, and I have a couple of slides following this, and I have those slides for a couple of reasons. More importantly, 23% is not where we want to be. We think that we can do better. We know we can do better. If we compare 23% MRS, our partner averages about 30% overall. So we're below that number. So minimally, our goal is to achieve and exceed the 30% marker. So as I mentioned, we had a lot of referrals. We had 72, I believe, referrals in the first year. So we had staff that were becoming trained, staff that were new to the model. We had a specific customized employment certification training that they had to take. We had technical assistance. We had a lot of changes going on in that first year. And in fact, the first year wasn't even really a full year because we had training going on for at least three months. So I'm very, very pleased that a lot of those placements have occurred just last year and early this year. So as we've made a lot of adjustments, and if we look at the next slide, it says lessons learned, opportunities for improvement. It kind of outlines some of those opportunities, if you will, that we became aware of once we deployed the model. So we meet monthly and we discuss data, we discuss different approaches. And like I said, we've utilized plenty of technical assistance to get feedback. We've made a lot of modifications and changes to streamline the process so we can generate better outcomes. So I'm very excited that we are generating improved outcomes. We are getting more placements now. And so it took us a while to kind of learn and, you know, develop from that, that information that we gleaned, some of these new, more efficient practices, but it's been very, very effective. So effective that the state of Michigan, I was recently on a call, actually just last Friday, and the state is convening a steering committee on customized employment. The state of Michigan is looking at implementing customized employment across the entire state. So Michigan Rehabilitation Services, the Bureau of Services for Blind Persons, just convened the steering committee. So some of us will be going to Lansing on January 22nd to be a part of the steering committee. So a lot of what we've learned here, a lot of the progress that we've made, will be factored into how customized employment will look across the state of Michigan. So it's very, very exciting. We'll also benefit from that because they have subject matter experts that are a part of the steering committee that are guiding the process. So we will benefit from ideas that they bring to the table, such as fidelity, right? If we talk about customized employment, we want to make sure that we're actually doing customized employment as it's designed and intended. That's one of the things that we've been looking at here the last few months. That's actually one of the reasons how this kind of started, and there was a springboard in this discussion with the state. So I think over the next few months, we're going to see a lot more about customized employment, not just here in Oakland County, but also around the state of Michigan. So I think it's a very exciting time, and really, in Oakland County, we're ahead of the curve. So, you know, we've been doing this now for a couple of years. And while I don't claim that we have all of the bugs ironed out, the strides and the progress that we've made has been, have been pretty spectacular. So it really is an exciting time to be a part of customized employment. I have a couple of things on the last slide about customized employment. These are more just generic about our employment policy. As I mentioned earlier, when I began the presentation, I was talking about competitive integrated employment. We revamped, OCHN revamped our employment policy in FY18, and it just specifies, really highlights that competitive integrated employment is the optimal outcome. And again, that's in alignment with customized employment. Also, when we talk about our philosophy and our values, employment first is another movement that's going around. It's a federal, it's a national, and it's a movement here that the state of Michigan has embraced as well as OCHN. So Michigan became an employment state, employment first state in November of 2015. So that's when the lieutenant governor signed an employment first order. And so what that means is that employment is the optimal outcome. It's the first priority. And so we don't believe that you have to demonstrate or prove to us that you're worthy to work. If you say you want to work, we're going to do everything we can to get you employed. You don't have to prove that you've earned the right to be considered for employment. So we're really excited about employment first and a lot of the changes, like I said, customized employment that are taking place in the state of Michigan. I should also mention, I should have said this, I noticed on the agenda it said I'm talking for 45 minutes. No. So you mentioned getting out early. Yes, I can't talk for 45 minutes. I may be able to answer questions. I'm excited, but I don't want you to get drowsy. Like I said, I'm very excited about customized employment. I know our network is too. We have our next phone call, our monthly meeting, just in a couple of days. So anyway, I don't know if there are any questions about customized employment or perhaps other vocational services that we're involved in here?
I'm sort of disappointed that it's taken so long for this to catch fire because I'm going to say 15 years or more ago, MRS had what they called rehab renaissance, which is fundamentally the same, and it was a start-stop. I mean, it started off with a high-energy kind of approach, and then it kind of trailed off. And I don't know if that was because the preparation wasn't all that it could be. I know you identified in some of your challenges that the discovery document might need to be kind of enhanced in some way so that maybe the fits are better. But what do you, what do you think it is that makes this kind of hit a peak and then kind of trail off? That seems to be from what, and I've been paying attention to employment for a long time.
No, those are, those are good questions. I think what happens is it's easy to have big ideas and generate a lot of excitement. And so initially, you have this support, but maybe it's not the best thought-out plan, or maybe the plan is incomplete. So it's actually one of the challenges that we faced here in order to get buy-in from MRS, because here we are, we're going to use this cash transfer agreement, and this impacts MRS and their dollars and also their outcome data. So there had been some less-than-perfect tries or attempts at customized employment in the past. So we were very cautious, and that's why we had a selection process with the vendors. We had training requirements that the staff had to be trained, and then we secured two years of technical assistance. And we've also benefited from some additional technical assistance recently through the employment first appropriations, the $500,000 that were set aside in the state's governor's budget last year and this year. So, and then we're having our monthly meetings, and then we had a big kickoff for the third year at the end of November. And so I think my long-winded response is, we tried to have a much more thorough plan, and we wanted to make sure that if something wasn't working, we addressed it as soon as possible. And so the discovery document, we have a new discovery document. We changed that, oh gosh, over a year ago. And so if there were some, some feedback or some bottlenecks, we kept working through it. We would bring it to our subject matter experts to get their feedback. We'd process it here in Oakland County, whether it was MRS, myself, or the direct service providers. So it's this constant refinement, and I'm not sure that that happened all the time in other areas.
Good to know that the thought process is still fully engaged because it's such a critical piece. All the social determinants you identified initially are critical to making sure everybody feels like they're a part of their community, their work environment, and it does create such a positive, potentially, social engagement, opportunities to meet people that you wouldn't meet typically in other locations, and you'd have things in common because you're working together and you would have things to talk about. I'm really pretty excited. I do have a question, just kind of a what-if kind of thing. I know that there's a process that individuals go through. Do you think that maybe we could get our providers to present more, like, more in-depth on the actual process, what a person goes through, or somebody who's been successfully employed, maybe they could come forward and talk about how they were able to determine the right fit, you know, what their interests were? I think I'd be very interested in hearing the process from the success side in particular, and maybe identifying some of the barriers kind of more at the grassroots level.
Okay, so, so a provider organization and/or an individual that's been?
Well, I think it's certainly focused on a person who is willing to come forward and had a successful experience. I'd like to hear about that, but also what the foundational work is that goes into making sure that success is more likely from that point of view.
Yeah, it's always very impactful, and I agree. You know, I appreciate that comment. I always find myself to kind of be recharged after hearing some of those stories, especially if you kind of are, at least from my position, I can be somewhat removed from that, and so I always enjoy hearing those stories. And so, yeah, I can absolutely discuss that, and I'm sure we can, we can schedule something like that.
Very encouraged that we're, you know, putting so much energy and talent into this and investing our scarce funds as well. But at the same time, I think maybe being able to listen to an outcome, you know, would be really helpful to me to see where things are, especially compared to what I know was happening or not happening, you know, back in the day. So if that's possible, I'd look forward to that kind of presentation.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your presentation, and this is also a very, something I'm very interested in. You mentioned that in the, the success rate is improving in the second and third year. Could you give us some of the couple of things that we have learned in the, in this recent time as compared to the first year?
No, that's, that's a good question as well. So the referrals, we had too many referrals, and so the discovery process, on average, takes about 40 hours to complete. And the discovery process replaces the more traditional assessment. Most individuals, family members, individuals, and staff are used to an assessment process that takes maybe a couple to a few hours. So here we have this new discovery document that's unlike anything they've ever done. You're going out and doing interviews with the individual, people, neighbors, family that know the individual. You're visiting them in their neighborhood, different settings, gleaning as much information as you can. And so that process, scheduling those meetings, boy, that was, that was a lot of time. And so that learning curve to be familiar with that process, scheduling appointments, they didn't schedule the appointments, boom, 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 kind of enough in advance. So they were doing them one-off, and so weeks would go by. SSI, SSDI, not fully exploring that. And so we had some situations where individuals actually had a job waiting, and they were scheduled to start a job, and they said, I'm sorry, I'm concerned about how this will impact my benefits. And so even though it was discussed early on, it wasn't fully explored, and so that was still hanging out there in a few situations. So now during the intake process, we know that we need to really explore that, and it's not going to go away. That's wishful thinking. So given the investment, the time and the money that's invested in discovery, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, including the discovery process, because for some, that could be kind of intrusive. Some individuals would say, you know, I don't think I want you, maybe getting to know me at that, that level. I don't, I don't know you. I'm not maybe comfortable with that. So really making sure that they fully explain customized employment, and then also not reverting back to standard supported employment, which is looking for those jobs that are posted, and then trying to find the match. So we were finding that some of the jobs may not be customized. So here we are in customized employment, but I'm not sure we always got customized employment outcomes. And the discovery document wasn't as efficient as it could have been. We had internships that were mandatory. We, based on feedback from our subject matter experts, we eliminated some of these steps. So we've, we've made a number of changes. We're really focusing more. We got a fidelity document, discovery fidelity scale, which is being newly implemented. It's not 100% vetted. It's kind of in the trial stages, but we're looking at that, and that's part of the steering committee. So when we look at what makes good discovery, which again is just one component of customized employment, but it is the foundation, so that is absolutely critical. Are we doing discovery? Are we doing that process correctly? So these are a lot of the things that we've been looking at, and then implementing those changes to make sure how it's being delivered aligns with customized employment. So a lot of changes around discovery, education, the document, internships. Yeah, it's, it's kind of been a whirlwind, but again, these are all critical pieces, and I'm sure there'll be additional information too that we'll learn, that we'll want to incorporate as well. Marketing too, sorry. We just did, I'm sorry, I just thought of one other thing. This is actually recent. We had new marketing materials, and so it, it does a little bit better job of educating individuals that might be interested in customized employment about the expectations for customized employment. So that's, it's a nice two-pager that our communications department did recently. So again, all of those presenting, educating, these changes here, like I said, they all are adding up.
Talk a lot about what is working, what isn't working, other than transportation?
Well, gosh, I guess, I mean, I listed some things that are, were not working. I like to think we've corrected most of those, certainly known deficiencies. Transportation is certainly a challenge. That has come up as a barrier at times. SSI, SSDI, that I mentioned, that's almost tied, I would say, for first place when it comes to barriers. We have some financial incentives, so if we just take a moment and not focus on customized employment, but just our vocational services in general, in FY19, we have several financial incentives. One of them is for staff to have a certain percentage trained in SSI, SSDI. And we're not trying to make all of the staff experts on SSI, SSDI, but to be cheerleaders, if you will. There's a lot of misinformation out there, so we're hoping that if they can communicate a positive message about SSI, SSDI, as well as know some basic information about resources that they can refer individuals to, that that will have a significant impact. And hopefully, because it's not always the individual, a lot of times it's the family member, the guardians, and I can appreciate why they would be concerned. I mean, these are hard-fought benefits, and you have to be very careful. So making sure individuals have the correct information at the correct time is what we're trying to accomplish. But that's going to be a work in progress. But the financial incentives, that's one of the ways that we can, you know, continue to promote that. We hosted a lot of trainings last year on SSI and SSDI, and I promote those things left and right to our network to try and get staff educated. The other thing, sorry, I should mention too, is I think one of the things that we're looking at that would be helpful is better education for individuals and their family members. I went to a training November 27th in Lansing, and it was talking about planting the seed. So there are a lot of family members and individuals that may be skeptical or reluctant to consider employment, and that could be for a variety of reasons, from benefits to maybe stigma in the community, maybe they feel like there's a safety concern. And so we're looking at adopting a training like that here for Oakland County. So we don't want to, it's not about making them do something they don't want to do, but it's rather a conversation that at least gets them to think about some of the possibilities. It has two very powerful videos. One is on SSI, SSDI, which is always kind of a dry subject, but the other one is stories from individuals that have been successful and family members that were reluctant to have their loved one consider employment. And so they're extremely well-done. So I'm excited that that will hopefully encourage more people to consider employment. And so that's one of the things, like I said, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, and there are some other meetings too that we'll have scheduled, but the training that I went to in November was exactly what I had in mind. It was extremely powerful.
Good. Alclaire? Apologize for being late. This is one of the main ones I really wanted to be a part of. But I heard you mention about the SSI, SSDI training. Had we ever considered having a specialist embedded here that knows so that they can do the trainings, as opposed to depending on staff to have to work with people and take these kind of trainings? I don't know how this model is set up, but it's my understanding when you're doing the outcome-based, that your time is not always covered, I guess is the best way, that I can see it, because you're asking people to prepare themselves, to prepare the people, but how do they get the outcomes? If they're not able to spend the time with them to do that preparation, and then you ask them to do additional training on top of that, it just seems like a bit much to me.
Yeah, it's, it definitely can be challenging to find the right fit. And so, you know, one, what's the knowledge that we'd like the staff to have? And then, two, what's that staff, what's their role? So we've done quite a bit of work with the state, and the state of Michigan has WIPAs, Work Incentives Planning coordinators, and they have Cwix that are the Certified Work Incentives counselors. And so these are the experts that have the very high level of training. But that's outside of our system, and there's just a handful in the state. So it's, can be challenging to access, and so if you have somebody that's in-house, it's certainly a lot more convenient. Plus, you know the individual, familiar, you know, familiarity and the convenience, so you can't really put a price on that. What the state has been working on is a benefits-to-work coach certification. So what that would be is a step down from, like, Paul Landry is a Cwix, a step down from that, and an individual that would be providing benefits counseling for about 10 hours a week or 25% of their job duties or more, because it's one of those skills, if you don't use it, you'll lose it. I have been to so many of those trainings just because I've hosted them, and I thought, well, this would be great. I should pick some of this stuff up. Sure, I know it for a few days, but I don't practice it on anybody. So, and it's always changing too. The amounts are changing. And so again, to stay current on it, you really have to be in a position where you're going to be using it. So this benefits-to-work coach certification, we're very fortunate that Tracy Howard at TTI is going to TTI is going to be the state lead on that. So we hosted a benefits to work coach training last year and we, there's a subject matter expert, Molly Sullivan, that the state has contracted with, but the torch is being passed to Tracy. So it's a huge resource in Oakland County. In fact, we were just playing some phone tag today because I'm going to have her come in and do at least a couple of SSI, SSDI trainings. So having one in-house, I think would be a little bit challenging because they probably wouldn't have the volume to keep that skill set current. But having our provider network have these individuals that are trained, whether it's a basic knowledge and then having somebody like Tracy that they can refer to, I think is, is the model that we're, we're looking to support. But there is a lot of flexibility within the organizations to decide how they want to support a staff providing SSI or SSDI benefits counseling.
Also, at the provider level, if they wanted to designate a person just to do benefits counseling, that's, that is possible?
That's what Tracy does. That's 100% of her job duties. I don't know, that's not the most common approach. A lot of times you would have staff, employment specialists, for example, that would kind of be well-versed, if you will, in all aspects of vocational services, including SSI, SSDI. They would not be at the same level that Tracy's at though. They would be able to probably do some basic online, the DB 101, go through the calculators and if it's pretty straightforward, give that individual some pretty important information, but wouldn't be ordering a benefits planning query. And so they would probably be referring to someone like Paul Landry. We work pretty closely with Paul and we've had Paul do some trainings as well. So we're lucky that he's somewhat convenient and available. But again, because that's such an issue, that's why the state and why we've been so interested in kind of building that knowledge base within our network, being self-sustaining.
Do we have criteria for what constitutes readiness for work for the people that we serve? Do we have like a checklist or, you know what I'm trying to say?
If they say they want to work, that's it. That's it.
Answer.
Yeah.
I have an issue with that though.
That's our criteria. If they say they want to work, they're ready. It's our job to support people wherever they're at, Malchiah.
I know.
Okay.
But I'm speaking from my own personal experience and a lot of times, just saying I'm ready to work without having the preparation on the back end. And I'm really thinking in terms of peers working with people to help them identify areas that might be a barrier to them being able to work. Because I had this conversation with someone recently, which they said, what you said, well, if they want to work, that's it. But if a person's not stable in their recovery, just having a job is not enough to keep them stable in their recovery. And that's something that I'm really concerned about. Not just for people that we serve, but people that we have working in our system right now as peers.
The term work-ready has been a term that has been used to exclude people from a vocational path. Oh, they're not work-ready, you know? And, and we want to go with the mentality that if someone wants to work, it's our job to help find out from them and the people who care about them, what supports they need to be successful. And with regard to a path to recovery, same thing. Sometimes people would say you have to be at a certain stage in your recovery to be ready to work. And others would say, employment and having somewhere where people are counting on you is part of a good recovery process. So it's, there's different approaches, but we don't want to take an approach where we're excluding anybody from a vocational path. But I hear what you're saying. If it means that their IPOs still outlines employment, but their steps are peer support to work on skills and, and whatever their needs are. But the term work-ready has historically been used to exclude people from planning towards employment. So we want to be cautious of that.
I'm cautious of that, but I'm also cautious of setting people up to fail. And that's one of the things that I'm starting to see. People who want to work, I'll use this one example, I know someone that wanted a job, had an interview on a day that they were in a psychiatric facility. So how they were going to keep the interview, and even if they did keep the interview, how would they be able to present themselves for a job if they're at that level? So that's what prompted my asking, how do you assess a person to know that they're ready for work? And I'm, I guess it's different for me because when I talk to other peers or people in that we serve about work, it's, it's a different conversation. Because when I talk to them, I tell them, I remember the days I stopped combing my hair. I remember the days I didn't want to shower, but I had to make some decisions if I wanted to work. I had to change my mindset. It's, it's different coming from me because I'm walking a mile in your moccasins. But some of the other people, when they're saying, well, they're ready, they may not think like I would think or another peer would think in terms of readiness. So I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to prohibit anybody, but I don't want to see people set up to fail either. And that's what I, I see is happening.
You think we might be under utilizing the peer support as a mechanism to help people in their employment path?
Yes.
Okay, that's valid. I hear you.
Yes.
Yep. We can talk about that, we can talk about that with the model.
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly wouldn't want to put somebody in a, in a situation where, you know, it's likely to have a negative outcome. Certainly recognize the courage and, you know, the hopes, dreams, expectations. So, you know, we, we strive to proceed with caution as far as working with the individual, making sure it's their wants and wishes and desires that are heard. And really, a lot of it goes back to really good job development and working with the individuals. And that doesn't always happen as far as a good job match. And that's one of the critical components. If we think about an individual, regardless of what their situation is, and again, I'm sure we can all think back to previous jobs that we've had, some were probably a better fit than others. But if we're able to do our job correctly and have a good match, we're not forcing something, it's, it's different. You know, just getting a person a job, okay, we can do that. But again, going to retention. And so if we're creating a poor fit, boy, that's, that's a dangerous situation. It's bad for the individual. You know, are they going to be motivated for employment after the way this thing went? Probably not. What about the employer? Does that reinforce any stigma that they may have had? And then if they think about hiring other individuals, they may think twice. So we certainly recognize that there's a lot of responsibility. And again, that's why, you know, customized employment where there's more training and more emphasis on discovery, getting to really know the individual better and kind of their, not just their ideal conditions for employment, but what works and maybe what doesn't work for them and being, being realistic about it. But it's not a deficit-based approach. And that's kind of, I think, if we talk about maybe artificially limiting individuals, you know, that we're, we're really making sure that we emphasize that everybody has skills, everybody has abilities. It's our job to recognize what those are.
To be back a little bit on the dialogue that just happened. Is there anything, could you take another look maybe at the discovery document itself and see if there are some places where the concerns that Malchiah is raising may or may not be in that document? Because what you said makes a lot of sense to me, but I'm also like, if you say you want a job, I want you to get that job. So I'm, I'm kind of in, in that rock and hard place in that discussion. But you said that you were looking at development and enhancement of the discovery document. I wonder if there's someplace in there that might help you, you know, kind of identify and set the stage where supports might be fruitful?
That's, it's a good suggestion. I will say the discovery document and process as it is, I, I will take another look at it, but it really does, that's kind of the heart of what, what it gets at. Looking at, from a whole bunch of different angles, where the individual is at, what they may need, what sort of supports, what are the strengths, what are the areas that are maybe not a strength? So the document is, is very, very thorough when it comes to kind of getting to understand and know the individual. I'll, I'll certainly take another look at it to make sure it's as thorough as I'm here, here telling you that it is. But that process, and again, that's why that process is so intense, because it's really designed to make sure it's, it's a different, it's a different approach.
Maybe if we'd had the document, it would be more clear to us. We don't really know what you're looking at. So maybe that could be part of a future presentation as well, so that, I, I'm familiar with the old documents that obviously didn't do all they could. And they, they were in-depth, but you know, I think with every insight, with every dialogue, there's probably another way to read something and maybe it's worth taking another look.
Citizens Advisory Council had an opportunity to review this document.
Um, oh boy. It's possible, but I don't know for sure. I'm, I'm ashamed to say that my memory is maybe not as good as it was. And I know I've gone to multiple groups over the last couple of years and I'm not sure, I, I presented there, that I present and share this document. I can follow up.
Thank you very much, both board and yourself for this very important dialogue. And I, I thank you very much for the work that you do and that as well, onto your staff. Thank you very much for presenting.
Take your time, thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is going to be a presentation on the SNT. Kathy, you want to introduce your group?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to bring some new faces to the board. I, I really like to give people an opportunity to meet you and for you to meet them. So this is intended to be a brief update, so we are going to move quickly through our, our topics here. I did want to cover the fact that we have launched a new initiative. It was part of our diversion council funding request for 2019. And that was to really target that final step in the sequential intercept model, which is reentry or sustaining someone in the community. So that is that probation and parole efforts in the community. What we have seen are some really significant gaps in understanding between our system partners and then the probation system in itself. As a result, we see that sharing information is often a challenge and we see as far as recidivism for individuals, very often it's based on technical violations of probation rather than actual reoffenses. So we know that this is an area that we want to drill into, provide training on the end for our system, as well as do that outreach to our probation partners about understanding what the mental health system is. We are quite frankly, often a mystery to them. So we are really pleased to have this funding. And with that, I am going to introduce to you Jody Gorinflow, who is our new probation liaison, and let her introduce herself, give you an idea of her background.
Thank you, Kathy. Good afternoon. So I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and I'm working right now towards my master's degree in social work. I have worked for 10 years as a probation officer in several different courts around southeast Michigan, including two mental health courts. I was the probation case manager. Significant number of individuals that are involved in the criminal justice system, they suffer from untreated mental health issues and/or developmental disabilities. And traditionally, the criminal justice system, they utilize a punitive perspective rather than a rehabilitative perspective. And that's unfortunate because untreated mental health issues, they cause and contribute to what the criminal justice system considers criminal activity. So I guess my position, part of what I will be doing is trying to, like part of my goals will be to sort of build a bridge of understanding between probation officers, parole officers, judges and the mental health system as a whole, with the ultimate goal of reducing crime, reducing recidivism and avoiding incarceration, long-term incarceration.
So yes, Jody literally joined us two weeks ago. So we are very much in the beginning phases of fleshing out what outreach will look like, but we are excited to move forward with that and we will definitely keep the board up to date on what we're doing. We're going to jump from there to our youth services update. So we're kind of focusing today on various points where we are touching or looking to prevent contact with the juvenile justice system. I do want to mention, if you did not see it, it did become law that we can have a juvenile mental health court. We are waiting to see what the Oakland County judiciary will do. The prosecutor's office will absolutely need to be on board with that. But we are excited that it is an opportunity now to look at that possibility in Oakland County. We also have an expansion of our MACI project and I'm going to let Siri cover that as well as introduce a new staff person.
Good afternoon, it's a pleasure to be back with an update on our juvenile services. And I will just be introducing Ashley Sansom, our new juvenile screening and referral specialist. She started about three months ago and picked up where Megan Zaloni had previously left off as she was our screening specialist previously. And just to provide you with a little bit of information about the grant that we had previously been given by MDHHS, it was to implement a screening tool to be used with individuals that are at risk of adjudication. And the tool was supposed to be used pre-adjudication. So it identifies various topics that are used, could benefit from addressing, let that be suicidal ideations, trauma, psychosomatic behaviors and so on, symptoms. And Ashley picked up on this about in October and I will go ahead and let her talk about where this project started and where it is at now, because we have made quite a bit of process, of progress over the last three months.
Um, good afternoon, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Ashley Sansom. I'm obviously new, like Siri mentioned. I joined the team back in October. For those of you who have never heard of the MACI or don't know what the MACI is, it's a 52-question yes or no survey that we're using right now with our youth who are 12 to 17. We do have a secondary screening that we can use with youth who are 11 and under for our, for our younger children. It measures seven subcategories, so I always kind of explain to families that it's a brief mental health screening. It measures alcohol and drug use, anger, depression, somatic complaints, which are like our headache, tummy aches, pains, thought disturbances and trauma. When I initially came on board, we were partnered with the Oakland County Circuit Court over in the juvenile court and of course, we are still partnered there. We are doing all of their diversion cases, kids coming in on diversion, as well as status offense pre-trials. And so when I came on board, we started looking at the intercept model and discussing where can we be more effective, rather than being, we want to be more proactive rather than reactive. So we do have a new partnership, which is very exciting, with the Oakland School, School Truancy Department. So we've been getting referrals directly from the school truancy officers with that. I love our truancy office. I love our truancy officers over there because they have been really spreading the benefit of the M A C E, and which has brought it into some schools. So we are also getting direct referrals from some schools, which is very, very exciting. To kind of jump back to mention the importance of the M A C E, a lot of times, there is, youth are in need of services. The main goal of the M A C E is to connect youth to mental health services and really prevent them from any involvement in the J J system, or from coming back into the J J system. We want to keep them out of there. So a lot of times, my referrals will be counseling agencies, whether that's through us, or whether it's through one of our providers, or sometimes our youth often have private insurance. So making sure they know where their insurance is accepted. And then making sure the family's general needs are met as well, as far as do they have transportation, food, housing, what other resources can really this family need to be beneficial? Because as we know, we need to treat the whole family system rather than just the child. So the circuit court as well, the referees there, as well as many of the caseworkers, are definitely starting to see the benefit of the M A C E. And they're now often starting to ask me to come in on cases that weren't necessarily a referral to begin with, but they want me there to kind of really screen this kid and see where they're coming from. We also kind of close the gap of communication as well, making sure that, I'm now typing a letter, sending it to the caseworker after the screening, to make sure the caseworker is aware of what the recommendations that the family was given, obviously, of course, with a release of information and the family knowing that, to make sure that gap of communication is really closed and all systems are working together. We've also had quite a few various meetings with school districts as well, really marketing the M A C E, making sure that we can get to those at-risk youth, especially in those various populations where we have a ton of at-risk youth, making sure we can get this resource out there. So we're continuing to form partnerships with school districts, as well as there are school truancy officers, really getting to as most of those at-risk youth as we can. I wanted to mention a little success story, because I think it's always kind of good to hear those and hear how beneficial this assessment can be for these children. I recently did a M A C E assessment with a child who was in middle school. It was a school truancy referral. He'd been missing all these school days, many, many school days. And a lot of it was due to medical reasons. He had this horrible asthma, all this stuff. And it turns out that mom had a lot of medical problems as well, like chronic arthritis. She was a lot of medical problems. And so the more and more I started to talk to the child, he just, he really wanted to go to counseling, which is really awesome to see, because a lot of times, our young youth are like, the counselor, I don't want to go there. So it was really cool to see that from him, that he had that initiative to want to go. And mom had tried to get him in services back over the summer, but then the car broke. There was no transportation. So they were never able to make it to their intake appointment. And so it turns out that the family car had broke again. The engine had blown up. Dad was working nights and getting rides from his coworkers. And so truancy was like the last thing on their mind. You know, they don't have a car, dad's trying to make ends meet. And through that, I was able to tell them about a resource for transportation. And we had talked about transportation resources. And this mother looked like she had just, the weight had been lifted off her shoulders. She was so excited. And she's like, you mean I can use my Medicaid to go to medical appointments? And so talking about, you know, logisticare and all those other resources that are out there for her. And the kid was actually able to get into an intake appointment and start counseling services, so really to prevent that school truancy piece. Because what happened was mom was not able to get him to a primary care doctor to help take care of his medical problems, which would then lead him to miss school. So there was a whole lot of systems not working there. So hopefully, with this transportation piece being fixed, that will kind of take care of the school truancy part. Wanted to mention that.
Obviously, very excited about getting into with Oakland Schools that partnership, but also schools directly seeing the benefit in this. And even now, sending the referrals prior to the school truancy referral. So we're very excited about that and hoping that the numbers will continue to go up as referrals and see where that takes us in this upcoming year. And Ashley did mention the juvenile sequential intercept model that I presented on several months ago. Continuing to work on that and seeing where we can fill gaps and where we can improve our own services and so on. And Kathy and I have had the opportunity to put a proposal in for what is called an I post or presentation at the National Council Conference, which is happening in Nashville, Tennessee, this upcoming March. And the juvenile sequential intercept model was accepted for this I post or presentation. So we will be traveling to Nashville. We will have 30 minutes, which is somewhat of an open platform where we have this electronic version of this. And people can come and explore what this intercept model is about and really explain what the intention behind it is. And taking it out into the communities and hoping that more people will pick up on that the juvenile system is so different than the adult criminal system. And we can ideally better serve our juveniles getting caught in the system. And obviously, we also want to use this opportunity to get feedback from our other communities. Is there something that they are utilizing that we're not utilizing? Are we missing pieces? So we're really looking forward to that collaboration piece at the national conference as well.
Certainly with youth and families, we want to continue to address crises, hopefully before they come to the attention of the juvenile system. As an ongoing effort with the Intensive Crisis Stabilization Services, Megan continues to lead that, and she's going to give us an update on that. Pick your mic.
Good afternoon to the board. Thank you for allowing me to provide this update. So last summer, I did do a presentation on Intensive Crisis Stabilization Services. And at that time, the service hadn't even launched. But when I did present that, the service, this was a youth mobile crisis team that can go out into the community, whether it's meeting a youth and family at their home or community location, potentially a foster care home, but out in the community. So it was really a great resource, because instead of individuals and families having to go to Common Ground or the E R, it's this great crisis service that's able to go out in the community. Well, now, as I'm here today, I can present that the service launched in September. And so it's only been about four months, but it has been very successful. In December and January specifically, we're seeing a lot more of referrals. And so with last year, the focus was really on getting the moving parts and working pieces together to be able to coordinate this. Moving forward into this year, it's really trying to look at expanding the service, seeing where groups or populations are, are they not maybe aware of this service? And so we're going to be doing mailings out to physician groups in our community that work with children, youth, and young adults. Also, we're going to be doing a mailing to individuals and families served in our network in between the ages of zero to 21, because we want to make sure that individuals and families are aware of this service. In February, we're also having a Metro Parent article released on this service. And so we're really excited about that as well. New Oakland Family Centers is our intensive crisis stabilization contracted provider. And so it's been great being able to work with them with this launch, also very closely with Common Ground. And as we move into this year as well, improving the coordination and referral pieces as well, because now, as more community partners, we did a lot of promotion in the fall on this service. But now, as more community members and the partners are saying, yes, this is a great service, really making sure those referral pieces are really there and improving them, especially with the hospitals now, because they're really eager to use this service. And so that's been a great partnership as well. But then, as we go forward into this year, we're also looking at building a Children's Crisis Advisory Group. Because in our community, we have a lot of crisis resources. But it's bringing together those initiatives with internal members at Oakland Community Health Network. But we also want to have representation within the network. But then also, we want to have it be youth-driven and, or youth-guided and family-driven. And so we want to make sure that we reach out to parent support partners, youth peers, and also be able to build avenues, to be able to have focus groups of individuals and families served, to be able to say, all right, we have great crisis services in our community, but are there areas for improvement? What are the strengths with our crisis services in our community? And how can we improve the services and responses? But we absolutely want to have that input with children, youth, young adults, and families, because they are the experts in their lives. So we want to make sure that as we go forward with this Children's Crisis Advisory Group, that it's youth-guided and family-driven, really so we can improve the crisis services in our community. And then another thing I did want to add, that we focus so much with children and youth, but this is a service that works and is available for young adults, so that 18 to 21 population as well. So I have coordinated with Oakland University. They're really excited to be able to partner with New Oakland Family Centers, be able to access this mobile crisis team. And also, I'm meeting with the Mental Health Committee at Oakland Community College. They're excited to be able to have this service available for students there, because it is a service available for anyone in the community, zero to 21. So we really want to make sure that we're not leaving out our young adults in our community as well. And then I look forward to being able to get some more data, as we have some more months and quarters underneath our belt, because as I mentioned, we've only been launched for four months. But being able to provide some additional data to the group, and then also with meeting with our Children's Crisis Advisory Group, being able to set some goals and say, what are additional outcomes that we're going to look to measure? You know, our addition, we have a lot of crisis data, but what are going to be our more long-term goals as we really highlight the crisis services in our community? That's all I have, but thank you.
Thanks, Megan. So I'll cover just quickly the kind of the state and national focus of some of the diversion efforts that are out there. The Michigan Diversion Council is continuing. I know that certainly as we have a change of guard at the state level, there was some concern that the Diversion Council might or might not continue with its current efforts. We had a phone conversation, statewide phone conversation, two weeks ago. The Diversion Council does remain intact at this time, and the funding certainly that is, that we currently have for 2019 remains. The feeling is that the transition team is not likely to get a good look at the Diversion Council for many months, just because of the amount of work that it does have to do. So we will await that time. We have also started post the statewide C I T conference. There is now a C I T legislative work group. I do represent Oakland County on that work group. We are looking to really press for legislative changes that drive a requirement for mental health training and crisis intervention training for law enforcement and first responders. And in addition, allocates funding so that communities who might not otherwise be able to access that training, which should always be free to officers. But that backfill, especially for some smaller communities, is extremely challenging. So some sort of funding in the state budget that would allow for police departments to backfill and be able to send officers. So we're also looking at standardizing some of the training as it's rolling across the state. As you know, we've been doing C I T training now for four years. So we feel we have a, kind of a model curriculum in terms of what's available in Michigan. But we definitely need to look at, what does that look like in another community? On that, in that effort, we will be attending the C I T International Conference coming up this summer, and bringing back the information and the initiatives from there to inform our Michigan efforts. We do, in fact, have a Michigan C I T logo marketing, really trying to make it a statewide initiative. If you are attending the Board Winter Conference, there are a couple of different sessions that do include some of the C I T information. But you'll also be hearing, there would be an opportunity to hear from the evaluators from Wayne State, who have been looking at all of the Diversion Council pilot projects across Michigan. Dr. Kubiak is going, and her team will be presenting on the outcomes across the 10 communities. And Oakland will certainly be highlighted in that information. So hopefully, we'll see you at the conference. We are going to focus at the next committee of the whole, on our intersect with the court system. So we will be looking to have 45th District come and speak about the mental health court, but then also looking at what our court-embedded liaisons are doing, whether they're working directly for O C H N. We also have a couple that work for Common Ground. But to give you a sense of what does that look like out in the community as they represent us and the people we serve. Three minutes. Any questions for anyone?
Thank you, ladies, for the update. Welcome aboard to the new people. Thank you. I have a question for Ashley. You mentioned that you had been doing some outreach to school districts. Which school districts would that be?
I remember all of these off the top of my head. But we've had meetings with Pontiac High School, I T A, Berkeley, Clarkston Alternative, Lake Orion High School. I missed any. Those are our main ones. Obviously, we want to put a high focus on, we know Pontiac's an at-risk area. However, Pontiac High School has an additional grant that they have their own person who does the M A C E. However, we are still getting some school truancy referrals from there. I was just there this morning assessing a kid. And I T A, I've been in contact with the dean over there, as well as the head counselor. And we've not received any referrals from them. And I keep reaching out to ask, you know, is there any problems or barriers? But it seems that we just haven't gotten any referrals yet.
And I have one other question for... About the C I T Legislative Work Group. Who comprises that group? Is that legislators or somebody else?
No, the work group is made up of multiple C M H S Ps are represented, but there are also a couple chiefs of police on that. And I think there's someone from a university as well. The intention is to present to legislature what we believe are some of the next steps to have a more statewide benefit, to really adopting C I T, not, again, not just as training, but as a model of how communities respond to events and how they support people differently.
This question is for Megan. I just wondered if you could remind me who comprises the team that's in the mobile crisis?
For the mobile crisis team, they have social work technicians. They also have the clinicians that have to be a master's level. They have a supervising clinician that also has to be a master's level clinician as well. And they also have an on-call psychiatrist that's available 24 hours a day. Now, when they do deploy out to the community, the clinician, being master's level, does accompany a social work technician. So they always go out in a team of two, where the clinician is usually doing the clinical assessment, the social work technician's really working with the youth and family on de-escalation and on crisis intervention.
Are they, is there like a cadre of people who meet that criteria? So when a call comes out, is it necessarily the same people all the time that respond?
No. They work on shifts. And so they have two full-time social work technicians, so they're more likely to go out. But then they have seven full-time clinicians that go out. So it's just depending on the timeframe and the date that they're scheduled. Yes, you're welcome.
I'm so heartened by your presentation, because I'm drawn to the board conference that you spoke about. I also want to ask you, have you been in touch with Connie Conklin, who is, okay, good? Because a lot of these issues come up. And I think it's important, like you said, that we know what's going on in other areas so we can all work together. So I really appreciate that. And congratulations for your presentation on the intercept model. That's quite a wonderful opportunity. Very happy to hear of your work. That's quite a wonderful opportunity, so very happy to hear of your work.
I have one question. Somewhere, I didn't hear anything about kids of 11 to 18. Did I miss it?
We do do the MACI assessment with our kids who are 12 to 18. 11 falls kind of in the middle. They can either do the Peds assessment, or they can do the MACI, kind of depending on their developmental level. And then we also have a pediatric assessment that we do with our younger ones. But we're definitely out there trying to connect these teens and young adults to all these services that are available to them, to really make sure they're meeting the most they can be and setting them up for a good future.
A crisis teen, is that 24 hours?
Currently, it is not, and we continue to monitor the hours of when calls are coming in, whether it's through directly to Common Ground, or then they refer to New Oakland, or directly to New Oakland. So right now, they operate from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And we expanded those from the original hours, which were really mostly in the evenings. So we're looking at 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., but then always monitoring for quality improvement and saying, you know, because I track each call that comes in. So are a lot of calls coming in between, you know, 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m.? And then obviously, we'll monitor and adjust as needed. You're welcome.
Well, Jody, Siri, Kathy, and Megan. Kathy, thank you very much for your presentations.
Do have to mention just one thing as we close. Of all these wonderful staff you do see sitting here, please remember that Ashley and Jody and Megan are all grant-funded. Again, you know, these are situations where staff have been willing to come on board, knowing that their employment is dependent on ongoing grant funds. Jody is funded through the Diversion Council grant. Megan's efforts are specifically funded by the department through Child Block Grant, and Ashley's is funded as a specific project by the department to do the MACI screening. So we just appreciate all ways the extra funding, but we also want to point out that it's, you know, a tenuous way to build a system being dependent on external grant funding. Just my plug.
Oh, I thought she was going to say I left somebody out, but anyway. Anyway, wow, what a powerful presentation. Thank you very much. Adam? It gives me great pleasure to introduce Annette.
Speaking of grants, Nicole and I are going to talk to you about a new grant that we are receiving. There's some interesting circumstances how we came about getting this grant, so I'm going to provide you with a little bit of background. The name of this grant, though, is called the Treatment Foster Care Oregon Model Grant. And we'll go ahead, do you want to go ahead? Oh, never mind. I forgot you're handing to me. So some background, when I got in this position, some of the meetings that I immediately had to start attending at the state, they have certain meetings where the PHP CEOs sit around the table with multiple people from the department. Sometimes it's 10 to 20 staff from various departments at the state level. And one of the meetings I was attending, Linda Zeller, then, the director, was giving a report about the number of children in Hawthorne Center. And the nature of the report was around the fact that Hawthorne Center was full. Do you know how many people, is it around 40 people, children can be at Hawthorne any time? Maybe 50?
I think consensus is 50 to 60.
Okay. Nicole's thinking 50 to 60 people at Hawthorne are children, I should say, at any given time. And the report the state was giving was that in addition to Hawthorne Center being full, there was just as many children on the waiting list as there were in the vacancies or in the slots at Hawthorne, which is obviously hugely problematic. And I know I've talked in various meetings, and we've talked, there has been an increased intensity of need for children with regard to crisis services locally. And in this case, this is state hospital, so this would be similar to institutional placement or longer-term placement for these kids, meaning their needs can't be met locally in state hospitals, or local hospitals. So during this meeting, Linda Zeller reported that the state was looking to build residential group homes for children. And I'm sitting there, my very first meeting, and quickly spoke up and said that I've spoke nationally for over a decade now, and have bragged about Michigan being one of the only states that does not place children in group homes, and proceeded to share the data with the folks at the state about how children's outcomes are best when they are supported in a family home. And ideally, that would be their biological family home, but if it can't be their family home, it's supposed to be a kinship home, a foster home, an adoptive home. But I quite clearly said how appalled I was that they were building group homes for children, and I didn't understand it at all. During that meeting, and as we sat there, a PHP director from another region kind of leaned over and whispered in my ear and said, "I don't know if you know, but Oakland has 12 kids in Hawthorne right now." Of course, I didn't know that. I really, really had no idea that the intensity of the needs of kids that we were placing, that we were part of the problem with having a significant number of kids in Hawthorne Center. So this led to some follow-up conversations with folks at the state, led to lots of conversations here internally about how are we going to refocus our energy to figure out what's happening with those 12 kids we had in at the time, and try to get them back home. And we have had lots of dialogue here, a whole variety of factors going on, and a whole variety of systems changes that we have been talking about internally. I'm happy to report to you, that whole conversation that I had would have been almost six months ago, and today, we have four kids in Hawthorne. So increased focus on these areas does, you know, lead to outcomes. But through that dialogue, it led to conversations about why these kids were landing at Hawthorne, and why these kids were landing at Hawthorne such long-term. And in a lot of cases, it was pure the biological family. The parents were terrified of bringing their own children home. And when I say children, we're mostly talking about older teenagers. And please don't let me give you the impression that they're placed there for no good reason. Typically, they would be our very, very highly behaviorally challenged, aggressive individuals, where there were circumstances that led the families to feel fearful, either for their own safety, the safety of their child with disability, or the safety of their other children. So after they've spent significant time at Hawthorne, the clinicians at Hawthorne may say, yes, they're ready for discharge, but the parents are terrified of the thought of bringing them home. One, because of the circumstances that led to their original placement. And two, there's no doubt, and if you've spent any time at Hawthorne or any locked facilities, which prior to getting this job, I was at Hawthorne 10 times in the last year, I will tell you, when somebody goes into a high-intensity behavioral challenge, they go on lockdown, right? The kids get locked into hallways, they get locked into their rooms, and these kind of things don't happen in family homes. So we had to have some really real conversations about why the parents were fearful, and we had to have some conversations about as valid concern. They could not see how the kids could make the transition from state hospital directly to their family home. So at the time, Sherri Felvey was the director of Children's Services. She has since retired, but Sherri and I worked together back in the '90s, and in conversation, I said to Sherri, "I remember doing voluntary foster care placement with children," and that would be a situation where parental rights are not terminated, but the parents are able to get. At that time, it would be a relief from caregiving. Children would go into foster care on a temporary basis. And Sherri said, of course, we don't do voluntary foster care placement anymore, because we didn't want it to be that biological parents could just kind of turn their kids over to the system. But she started talking to me about this model, and this grant, and this national movement for what's called Treatment Foster Care. And she said that she would talk to the funding entities, which of course is the state, and their partners at Wayne State University, and see if there would be a potential of us joining an existing grant that was already in existence. So the general idea of this grant is that it's a short-term therapeutic transition for youth. So it's not meant to be a long-term placement. There's certain very specific timelines, and I believe it's six to eight months, where the kids would reside in a family home, foster care in nature, but the parental rights are not terminated. It's meant to be a transition step for youth that would be at Hawthorne. Or in our dialogue, we said we would like to use the model as a proactive alternative to kids, so why even have them go into state hospital if we could get some highly-trained foster parents to help with this transition? So it's meant to minimize or avoid state hospital altogether, and the parents still keep their parental rights in this process. So the model is set up to be a step-down for Hawthorne specifically. It can also be used to prevent admissions, and we would be the third entity that's joining. So currently, there's a pilot site at CEI, and there's another, which of course is in the Lansing area, and there's another pilot site at Children's Center. Those both began last year. They were identified as the two pilot sites. They thought they would only have two. In the utilization of the grant dollars, though, they wanted to, one, add a third entity. These other two pilot sites decided to focus on younger children, so they are, is it six to 11? Does that sound?
Yeah.
Six to 11. And we said that our focus area would be on the older kids, 12 to 17, which Nicole ran our demographic data, and that indeed is the age of the kids that we have in Hawthorne. It's also the age of the kids on the, mostly, on the substance, I'm sorry, serious emotional disturbance waiver. So this grant is set up specifically, the fidelity of the grant, and Wayne State would be measuring the fidelity for kids with SED. We have talked to the state, though, that we want to apply the same model, not only to kids with SED, but kids with high-intensity behavioral challenges with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And Dr. Melos, the acting director, took over Linda Zeller's position, said that he's fine with that. And he said, you know, we started talking about codes, what code are we going to use? And he used the term, you know, he's not as concerned about the code, he's more concerned about getting the kids out of Hawthorne. So we said, okay, we like that mentality, let's just do the right thing. So we have been meeting with the folks at Wayne State and working through the details of the grant. It is high fidelity, meaning they really dictate step-by-step how the grant is supposed to be rolled out. We are super excited to be a partner. I can tell in our conversations, when we are meeting and our phone consultations with the folks from Wayne State and the state, they have said they're looking forward to Oakland joining. One of the things they have said is, the other entities that are rolling this out are using existing child placement agencies, meaning foster care agencies that are receiving kids that have been removed from their home for abuse and neglect. And we are going to be using an agency that is going into it with a family approach, not used to working with kids that have been removed for abuse and neglect, and more as, we asked them, could we drop the term "foster care" altogether? That feels a little stigmatizing in itself. And they said there's high fidelity around this, so the folks from Wayne State want us to use Treatment Foster Care. We're trying to view it more as a therapeutic family setting to help kids transition either out of state hospital or prevent state hospital. So we're thrilled about it. Kim, who took over at the state for Sherri Felvey, said she was in the room when I made my very first statement about being appalled about group homes for children, and she said she can't wait to see Oakland. They seem to know that once we decide we're going to do something, we're going to do it well. And the state's really excited to have us partner, and we too are very excited. And I look forward to the days when we will sit here and tell you we no longer have anybody at Hawthorne. And this model, hopefully, will be the approach, such that kids won't have to be placed there, or if they are, it's very, very short-term, and they won't have to be there long-term. So Nicole has been our clinical lead with regard to communicating with the state, taking a look at the documents that we have to submit for the grant, and she's going to go into a little bit more detail of how we have structured the grant and what's involved with it.
Sure this works. Good afternoon. So for our local implementation, we're happy to say that CLS of Oakland County are going to be our partners in launching the Treatment Foster Care Oregon Model. And like Annette had touched on, the other two implementations are currently using, or working with organizations that are child-placing agencies that are used to working with youth that are being removed from their home for abuse and neglect. And when the department was talking to us, they said certainly, you know, they didn't want to dictate who we partnered with or where we went, but they said it is a large learning curve for foster care workers that are used to working in the typical foster care system, to really be able to adapt and champion this type of a model, because their entire relationship with the biological family and with the foster family is very different. So CLS of Oakland County was a wonderful fit, because they are a child-placing agency, and they have extensive former experience in this type of foster care model. So they will be establishing a satellite office in Oakland County for the purposes of this grant. And like Annette had mentioned, we did run some five-year longitudinal data, both on the youth that we had that were being admitted to Hawthorne, as well as the youth that were coming into services through the SED waiver. What I wanted just to touch on, too, is that I think when the SED waiver first rolled out, we were very used to it being a waiver very specific to children who were temporary or permanent court wards, meaning some type of parental rights had either been terminated, they were in the foster care system. However, the waiver is now much more than what it was five, six, seven years ago, in that it's also a way to waive families' income, so that a youth isn't eligible for Medicaid. And we have seen the youth coming into services grow exponentially over the past several years. It's referred to as the traditional SED waiver. The state had rolled all of the waivers into one, so now it's kind of one big waiver. But because parental rights, again, are not terminated through this model, a lot of the youth coming in through the SED waiver, it's waiving parents' income so that the child is then eligible for Medicaid, can receive the intensive home and community-based supports and services. So that would kind of be the two pockets of youth that we were looking at. It is grant-funded, so we wanted to touch on the fact that the grant fund does include all of the staff training, overhead, payment to the foster families. The purveyor is out in Oregon, and it does include a lot of ongoing consultation through all three years of the grant as well. So it's not, here, here's a bunch of money, we're going to train you, and then we're just going to go away and hope that you step up to the plate and do everything well. So I think that the department did a really nice job in terms of making sure that there's ongoing support and consultation for everybody throughout the term of the grant. Just to give you an idea, our initial budget, we're still finalizing the numbers. We have a call with the department tomorrow to talk to it, but for year one is around $610,000. So this is not a small grant, and it's not a small cost or a small task that we are embarking on. Sorry. Okay, here we go. So some of our goals, certainly, it's always to keep youth in our community, so like Annette said, not just a step-down from Hawthorne, but in lieu of. While we have done a tremendous amount of work and really shrunk the number of youth that we currently have in Hawthorne, Hawthorne does still have an extensive waiting list, meaning that the statewide issue of more intensive needs for youth has not gone away. And so if there's a way that someone might qualify for the state facility, but there's a waiting list, and we could use Treatment Foster Care Oregon, and the child never has to step foot in a state facility where they have to go on lockdown, then that would be our goal as well. And certainly, keeping families together. So I think you'll see several times throughout the presentation and writing, and you'll note that Annette and I keep harping on, even though it's called foster care, parents don't lose any of their rights. And so certainly, we're very aware that there's got to be a lot of community outreach and education around this. But parents don't have to sign their rights away, and so that might be, if we talk about potential barriers and things that we've identified, that's going to be a big piece of really educating our community and helping parents to understand that this is a support to them. It's not anything to be afraid of, it's hopefully something that we want them to take advantage of. And then just to give you an idea, some of the year-one outcomes that occurred at CEI and Children's Center, so that when we come and report to you on our progress. At Children's Center, in the first year of the grant, they had two licensed homes. They have four more in process. They received five referrals, and their first youth was placed in a family foster care home in October. So there is a lot of groundwork that's laid and a lot of training that's... Um, so there is a lot of groundwork that's laid and a lot of training that's done before homes are licensed as, homes are licensed and referrals received. Um, at CEI, they have one licensed home and have received seven referrals. Um, at the time of the one-year mark, they hadn't, uh, yet had any placements. Um, so MDHHS kind of did give us that heads up too, of there's a lot of groundwork to be laid before all of a sudden you start getting kids referred and, and being able to really utilize the service. But we're very excited to, uh, embark on that, like Annette said. And so our next steps, uh, we have a conference call with MDHHS and Wayne State tomorrow. We have a, a draft budget along with a series of questions, um, that we have compiled along with CLS. Um, and hopefully we can review that and agree upon an, a final initial year one budget. Uh, once we have that done, then we can go ahead and proceed with our contract. And so typically with MDHHS, they will load things into their system called egrams and we put in our goals and our objectives. Uh, we finalize the budget, they send a contract for, um, Annette to sign off on. And then once we sign the contract, then we can really hit the ground running, um, identifying staff, hiring staff, getting folks trained and really starting to implement this grant.
What is surprising to me, cause whenever I hear a grant or even opportunity, I'm always like, yeah, let's go. And they, they told us from the beginning, cause they could tell how excited we were about going big. Their goal for us in the end of first year is to have one or two foster homes. So that does tell you there's an entire team. Uh, the team is set up with hiring two therapists, one therapist to work specifically with the biological family to get them ready for return, one therapist to work with the child in the existing foster home setting. Um, and obviously those foster parents, we want to be of a higher skillset. Uh, the, also the model does, uh, call for less children in the home. Sometimes you think of foster care and you're thinking five and six. And I mean, this is meant to be a very therapeutic setting, uh, with high intensity, uh, clinical team involvement. They haven't used this term, but in, in my mind, I'm thinking of it maybe like the ACT model for a child in foster care that's also working with the biological family for reunification. Um, so, so yeah, it starts up small, but it is very intense and Wayne State University, uh, when we did our call, they had physicians, I think they might've had four or five psychiatrists and physicians on the team. So it is a high, high clinical model with a high level of training, but we're thrilled and excited, uh, to be invited to be part of this opportunity. So we'll, we'll welcome any questions you guys might have.
I, I'm really enthusiastic about this project. I think that, um, if you've ever been to a, a facility with kids and, and seen, um, the environment and how, um, punitive it seems rather than, uh, therapeutic, that I don't know how you could possibly think that, um, grouping kids in any other setting but with a family makes any sense at all. So I, I'm really very enthusiastic and very supportive of this. The thing that, um, would always seem challenging, and it's been a while since I've been to, uh, the facility in this area that, uh, was a locked facility, is the hurdle of going from a small box to back to your family in the wide open space. I mean, just that transition. So I can see the value of having somebody never have to experience it. I, I just, it, it, it can only make a world of difference to them because there's a bunch of things you don't have to undo. And for the families, the longer their kids are away and the more different the kids become, bringing them back home and expecting to have your family run, um, as it might have, even when it wasn't at its best, but it was still, you had support and you had a family dynamic. Uh, I, I just, it, it, this seems a very positive step and I hope that, um, we show the world that we can do it better and, and maybe even more quickly than they anticipate. Needs to be done with care, but I, I don't think I could be any happier about this approach than I am because, um, kids, I mean gee whiz, they've got so much life left and, and to kind of put that, that kink in their road, um, on top of other challenges, just can't really, I mean, it, the, the dignity and the, uh, respect that we show the kids can only reflect, you know, back on them in a way that will make them feel better about themselves and not like they, they're being punished for something for which they didn't stand in line. So I, here, here, and I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about this.
All it took was one visit for me seeing the barbed wire around the playground to say, this is not where kids should be.
Eight-wide. I mean, you know, you can go anyplace and they look kind of from the inside, they all look the same. Some are prettier on the outside, but, so I'm, I'm, yeah, it's a haunting kind of image.
Is it someone can stay at Hawthorne?
No, there's no minimum stay.
And the reason I was going to Hawthorne before getting this job is there's some parts of the state that have had kids there for over a year. There's, there's some that have spent a year and a half there. Um, and it was exclusively, the parents weren't ready to bring them home, willing, ready, whatever, however you want to describe it.
What is the involvement with the schools? Because these children are in, at the education system, so how do we work with schools in order to, um, support the child coming out as well, going back into the school system?
While they're at Hawthorne, uh, the majority of the kids get school right on the campus. Uh, a lot, some of the kids aren't even determined, uh, I don't want to say behaved well enough, but some, uh, get homeschooled in their individual room on the ward. So to say that they're not necessarily used to a school environment as well would be accurate. So that's part of the transition that we, uh, need to transition them back to a school environment too, because they're used to not leaving the campus.
Uh, that part of this grant, is that part of the, or that's?
Uh, um, the grant includes the community-based services and supports we currently have in place. And one thing that every youth that uses this service will have is wraparound. Um, and wraparound is very well suited to working with the, the multiple systems and the schools and making sure that, um, the, the youth are enrolled and receive all the supports that they need to.
I was thinking about it and have the words, but, okay, great.
Thank you for the presentation. I was just wondering where you would find parents that would have foster parents or temporary parents that would have the kind of skillsets that it sounds like they're going to need, other than just, you know, off the street type people?
Sure. The beauty is, is that, um, off the street type people who are willing to develop that skillset are exactly what, what we look for. Um, the grant does have line items that are dedicated to foster parent recruitment, um, very specifically, and the foster parents themselves go through as intensive training as the clinical people, um, that are providing the therapeutic supports and services. So it really is a, um, an all encompassing approach where you have very highly trained foster parents, a very highly trained, uh, clinical service providers, and they're all working together to support each other as well as the youth and the family.
They don't have to have a clinical background?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's why their goal for us would be to have one or two foster families ready at the end of a year, because it's not like we're just throwing kids in because they signed up, you know? Um, for that matter, uh, Lori Lindstrom is in the room from CLS and I'm sure she would be eager to say, if anyone knows anyone. Finding the right foster parents will be key to making this success. So it's not like we have the people in mind. Um, part of the funding is for a licensing worker, um, and Community Living Services does already have a licensing worker, um, but the recruitment and maintaining, I guess somebody's got to be ready for this intensive year of training too.
When you say foster home, it's just a family dealing with one or two kids?
Really?
Okay, thank you.
This kind of presentation and this grant, you mentioned something, at least I thought I heard you say this is a three-year grant, right? When do we think it's going to start?
Original grant three. Yeah, and are we joining in year two or are they going to issue us full three years?
That is one of our questions for MDHHS.
Tomorrow, tomorrow. Yeah.
All right.
I would, I would hope we'd have full three years to demonstrate, but we're coming in at year two, we know that.
Other amount of the grant and, um, well, let's start with that. And is it matching?
There is no match required. Uh, we haven't finalized the budget yet. The rough numbers that we just put together today are right around $610,000 for the first year. And it goes up every year after that.
Expectation of more kids.
You would have more kids then, so you'd be paying more foster homes and training more homes.
I'm excited about it. And the fact that they offered it to us is fantastic, just based on conversation.
I have another question. Would this be limited to children or youth from Oakland County or could kids from other counties come here? Since it's only three sites that are providing this service.
For now, it's, uh, it would be limited to youth that are in Oakland County. Uh, in reading some of the year one grant and their continued goal is, I believe they can, uh, intend to continue to roll this out throughout the state. Um, they wanted just the early successes to justify, I think earmarking the dollars beyond the grant funding.
Yeah, the sustainability is very important and, and we did talk about that. We said, boy, if we are hugely successful, could this be a model that Oakland County rolls out and offers it to other regions? But then the conversation internally was, the point is to have the kids be as close to their biological family as possible. So would it make sense for the Grand Rapids area parents to have someone placed in foster care over here? You're not going to get that intensity in transitioning back home that you would if it was more local.
Um, in this model, is there, um, interaction between the families, the biological family and the foster family? How does that dynamic work?
Yes. Um, I can't speak too in-depth because I've only seen some of the summary clinical training materials, um, but that is the expectation. So because the biological parents retain their full rights, there's no form of guardianship or anything that gets transitioned to the foster families. And so if it's, you know, signing off, going to the doctors or signing off on any kind of therapy, certainly all of the person and family-centered planning that would be done is done in conjunction with. Um, so you could almost think of the foster family as, um, a, a really close family friend or ally coming in and being an integral part of the person-centered plan. Um, but that youth remains the center with the family very closely wrapped around.
And both would be part of that whole person-centered planning process at the table, which again is different from a more traditional foster care system where parental rights have been removed temporarily or permanently.
Admittance to a hospital. I mean, that is such a, such an important step.
Yeah, and, and that's why we love it because it is validating the important role the biological family has, uh, from day one, even though the children have been in Hawthorne for however long, uh, you know, they've got to be at the table because that's what the ultimate goal was, six to eight months to return them to family. So it, it's going to be upfront, that's how the fidelity of the model works, uh, that this is a transition step, uh, not a final placement.
Strength building for the biological family, because so often they take, uh, such a big hit emotionally with having to make that decision and they, their feelings are, I'm sure are very conflicted and being able to, um, skip that step of sort of walking away a little bit and being able to participate as, as much as they can in a, a structured, supported way, it's got to be really good for the family too, as well as the individual, the child.
And seeing they can do it in a different environment. So, so often they'll be doing well at Hawthorne, but the family just can't picture them leaving that structured environment and doing well in a family home. So that gives them the opportunity to be right there and see the transition process unfold.
Thank you very much. Great job. Very informative.
We're here today to present the, um, investment pros and cons for the board. This, this is being brought to you as a result of Morgan Stanley contacting us regarding our investment, saying that they weren't able to, uh, no longer hold the assets as the custodial. Uh, we received a letter, which we shared with the board, that showed, um, effective March the 29th of, uh, this year, they'll no longer serve as our custodial. So based on that, we had three options. Oh, we can invest, we can allow, um, Morgan Stanley to pick a, a custodial for us, we can choose our own custodial, or we can RFP this, uh, process. We know that, um, work, right now, OCHN is associated with PA 20 investments. And as a result of that, you know, there was many restrictions that applied to PA 20 along with the minimal clientele that, um, Morgan Stanley had in that market, they made an internal decision that, uh, they would no longer be able to, uh, custodize those funds. So with that, they, we had three options. We could allow them to choose which bank that our funds get moved to, or we could pick, um, which bank we wanted to move them to, or we could also RFP the process. Um, after doing analysis and study, we, um, we found out that we used the pro and con format that was requested by the board and we looked at sustainability. Right now, we got three banks referred to us from both of our current investment bankers. And the list of banks are US Bank, Fifth Third Bank, First State Trust Bank Company, Comerica Bank, PNC Bank, and SWAB Bank. Um, based on those three highly recommended, um, banks to serve as our custodial, uh, we priority ranked all six of them, um, based on three categories. Um, one was, the categories that we looked at was how familiar they were with PA 20, um, our reporting structure. And, um, so those were the things that we looked at to determine which bank received the highest ranking priority and the fees that they charged to hold our funds. After looking at, and we did analysis of that, which is in red at the bottom, but we don't have to go to that. Um, you can go back up.
You all received this a couple of weeks ago, I believe, so you've had the opportunity to review, um, the analysis.
Well, we looked at administratively, um, of investment. We, you know, currently we have two separate investment bankers that manage our portfolio. One is CS McKee, the other is Morgan Stanley. Based on those two, one, one of the firms managed it as a advisory fee. That means they get a set fee each quarter, which is a percentage of the investment total. Uh, right now, that percentage is 20 basis points, which in layman's terms, you know, equates to about $2,000 per million dollars worth of investment. So if we have a $10 million investment, um, on an annual basis, they would get, uh, $20,000 to manage that portfolio. Whereas Morgan Stanley, on the other hand, they, they manage the portfolio based on a commission. So they receive a commission every time a transaction occurs within the portfolio. When we receive our statements monthly from each bank or each investment firm, we, uh, receive, we, we receive, um, Morgan Stanley, it does not show what their commissions are. We have no idea what commissions, when they purchase a transaction, they negotiate that and they sell us or they issue us the net difference of what that security pays. So whatever commission they receive, uh, we wouldn't have that as part of our statement. Whereas CS McKee, they receive a straight, uh, advisory fee. We know what that amount is going to be every quarter based on, uh, the percentage of the portfolio. If the portfolio go down, their percentage go down. If the portfolio goes up, their, uh, fees, fee increase as well. So it's to their best interest to make sure we get good returns. We know, I know that's, uh, Sid, you had asked a question about why couldn't we just have? We know, I know that, Sid, you had asked a question about why couldn't we just have a, our portfolio held in a money market and get the return. Each, each statement, they issue us a benchmark of how well money markets are performing as compared to our investments. So it's, it's to their benefit to make sure that our return is greater than a money market, because why take the risk of investment when you can just put it in a secure money market and not run the risk of, of going with the investment banker? So they have consistently outperformed the money market accounts. So we just wanted to share that with you. So some of you had asked about the PA 20 policy. The PA 20 policy really restricts or limits the type of investments that the investors can, you know, invest in. So there's no real risky investments. Most of them are low yield returns, safe, secure securities, and so.
Let me make a suggestion, please. This is a very complicated story, and a lot of us don't have a lot of experience in this. So perhaps we could ask the board if they have any questions to kind of go along and take a break every, every few topics and see if there's any questions that any of the board members have.
Good.
A moment, and then ask if there's any board members starting some of the comments or some of the, you know, presentation that we're about to hear.
Yes, thank you, and I really appreciate this stuff. I did read through it a few times to make sure I understood the approaches and the strategy. And I remember when we went to two organizations, because we were sort of doing a, what I referred to as a bake-off, comparing who was going to do a better job with our, with our money. You remember that too, right, Anya?
I think, yes, I do.
Yeah, it's, and the whole concept is who can perform with their share of our money better.
The analogy was funny.
It is.
It is.
Yeah. So the question I sort of have is, because one, we know what the percentage of asset is, so we know what our payment is, the other one is buried in the, their, it's buried in the net of the investments, their commissions and whatever. Question is, I don't remember how much we gave each one, but they were similar. And I know this has nothing to do with which bank holds the money. The question is, which one of these groups, was it Morgan or McKee, which ones do they have a job with their share of our money?
Actually, we sent, I think Sid asked for us to forward the analysis of how, how each bank is performing, and I think you all have a copy of that. And based on the six-month analysis, it looks like they're real close in terms of return. There's, there's not much difference from one bank to the other.
The bank's holding the money, but not the investment management, right?
Well, we lumped the C.S. McKee account with the bank that's holding the money. So we're comparing Morgan Stanley with the Bryce Group that's holding the money. So it's, when you say C.S. McKee, it includes the Fifth Third Bank with who holds the money.
Okay. I was curious, just on the investment side, because we've been doing this for, well, Willie was in the CFO row at the time when we started this.
That'd be over five years now.
Five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The word custodian is different than what I'm used to hearing. Anybody can, well, not anybody, but a law firm can be the custodian of the funds. That's different than investment banker. And I'm not saying that an attorney, law firm can't do a better job, or that's not the issue, but they're usually the ones that would hold, would act as a custodian.
Right.
So then you've got the investment banker, and they're going to be close. If you have five of them, all five are going to be very close in returns, because for whatever reason, we feel we're restricted by PA 20, which gets to my next question. Has that been verified that we are only allowed to invest in PA 20, 100% of our funds? Or is it a percentage of our funds that we're only allowed to invest in PA 20 investments? And if we don't know the answer, I think that's very critical, to take another look at it, because it's been five years.
100% of the funds should be invested in bonds, securities, and it's in our policy. CDs, savings accounts, commercial paper rated at the time of purchase with the highest, highest grade of double A, triple A. And, you know, so it specifies out which, what type of securities that the investment banker can invest in. I'm reading from our policy.
So that's our investment policy, which I believe you all were, you participated in the development of. So for us, we are required to follow the policy set forth by the board. So if that, if we could review, if you wanted to look into that policy, I'm not sure off the top of my head if it's Medicaid rules that require the use of PA 20, or if it's just government in general, I'd have to go back and look at that, because I don't know if it were Medicaid specifically, our local money might be able to be invested differently. So I don't want to quote that without going back and looking at it, because that's just how we've always invested, is you.
Tools have changed. Totally understand what we're only require, only, what we are only allowed to invest in. And I'm not suggesting that we be very speculative at all, but as long as you have that PA 20, you could, well, I, I'm kind of repeating myself, you could have five people investing your dollars, and they're going to be very, very close. Market bears, so, and I'm not sure we need two, and I'm not sure we need five. And I'm also not sure that even one person would do a better job, a professional who does this for an everyday living and watches the market. And when I mention money market, investing in the money market, I don't, I may have done a bad job in getting my explanation out. I'm not recommending that we invest a large percentage of our money in the money market, because that doesn't make sense. But what I am recommending is that if we do a six-month cash flow, I'm not talking about a P and L, I'm talking about a cash flow, looking and seeing where the cash is flowing over six months, there will be a time, and I think I heard this before, that we will have a large sum of money on hand. That's the money that I think we should be looking at to invest in the money market, because we have access to those funds 24/7. And, and by the push of a couple of buttons on a telephone, we can transfer those funds to our general fund and vice versa, back and forth. And I suspect if you looked at that exercise, we would pick up quite a bit of money at the end of the year.
I just want to clarify for you, the presentation we did at the last board meeting was a six-month cash flow document.
Thing is, if you added up the cash available at the end of the month, and you added up all those for six months, that would tell you whether it's cash flowed or it didn't cash flow, correct? Those are really P and Ls.
Oh, that wasn't P and L necessarily, because it, it was specifically the cash coming in and the cash going out. So we did not include any depreciation or non-cash expenses.
I know that. And then you've got a, okay, then you've got a total at the end of the month, cash Get a cash flow analysis, ending cash flow, beginning cash flow, and then you're, you would have a large sum of money during that period.
Yep, and so we, that was in that document. It showed the bottom line after each month, and it also showed the total cash on hand after six months. It was in the summary information.
You mean that during the month, you might have a large sum of money that's sitting in the general fund?
Oh, at some point, yes. During this fiscal year, we should start to build up cash reserves again, and then we will have to decide how we want to handle those. Because last year was a deficit budget, if you recall, we continually had cash flow where we were pulling out of investments. So, you know, we didn't have any of these issues over the last several years because we were in a, when we were in a deficit budget. So going into 18, that should be a bit better, but I wouldn't say that we have any period of time more than maybe a week that has any material amount of money we would be able to move around, because we do pay people every other week at minimum, and as we're transitioning providers, we do do early payments when they need it. So I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable with juggling that and not having immediate access to it, because providers will pick up the phone and say, I need to make payroll. So that's the flexibility we try to maintain in order to help transition providers.
I'm going to move on from that subject. I will be glad to, if allowed, I would be glad to sit down and maybe do a better job in explaining what I'm suggesting.
It might be better just for us to have a smaller conversation, so I can better understand what you're looking for. As it relates to this, we have to, we have to make a decision about something, and the plan is to do that at February's board meeting. We have to decide what we're doing as it relates to the current, the fact that we don't have a custodial for the money that's in the, which one is it, the C.S. McKee account? Morgan Stanley account. So I know you all have the pros and cons, you've had them for a while, you also have the recommendation from, from us. So I guess what we would like to know is, is there any additional questions you have related to this? Do you have a particular direction you think you want to go in? Obviously, we can vote at the actual board meeting if that's the preference, but depending on the answer, we would need to get moving on that fairly quickly, just because there are RFP processes, if that is the decision.
Well, we're not an RFP or an RFQ, it's really going to be a fairly simple quote, right? Because they're all, they're all chartered businesses, they're all regulated businesses. We're just looking at what's the fee they're going to charge to hold on to our funds, if there's a fee at all, versus what might be the interest holding it in those kinds of accounts.
I, I guess then I'm a little bit confused, because we put the whole ball of wax out to RFP to determine if this is the best way to go, with Morgan Stanley being custodian and another bank being the actual investment holder, but rather, we want to go a new direction and find a new agency that's going to be both, as is our other investment company.
Yes, and if we want to continue with having two different investment companies, because based on the analysis, we're not really seeing a whole lot of difference.
So right now, we have two. Hide us, but they will no longer physically. Where we have two, one doing both, one doing only one, or whether or not we want to consider having one investor being our entire investor and custodian.
Each, while they had their group that held the money, each had their own separate entity that they did the investment. It wasn't like one did both, it was really that they had. I think you guys wanted to get a sense of what our thinking is, because if we're going to suggest an RFP to go out to market, you can start doing the legwork, even if it's not approved, right?
If not, we can wait till next week.
I know we was charged, this came as a result of just the finding a new custodial, but when we uncovered some stuff, we saw where we could improve the entire investment process.
So we will have a cost from, first of all, my vote would be to get rid of Morgan Stanley completely. That would be my vote, for good reason, and they're the same reasons I brought this up a long time ago. They didn't pick us to move on, away from us. There's a reason why, and I'm not, is anybody from Morgan Stanley in the room? I just want to make sure, good. There's a reason why, it's public information, I don't want to get into it, but look it up, it's all public information. They were not the best for us, and they were not the best for quite a few people. They were recognized as not doing a decent job in PA 20 investments. So my vote would be to not consider them or have them come here and make a presentation as to why we should keep them involved with us. And as far as the others, my vote would be to see which one of these, what was their track record over the last five years?
Well, and so just, you know, just as, as far as procurement processes go, typically we would RFP this out every so often anyway. It has been over five years at this point, so you see that that is the recommendation from us, is to go ahead and RFP this, and then we can decide, once we RFP it, do we still want to have two different investment strategies? Do we want two different custodials? None of that has to be decided on to RFP it. It's just whether or not we're RFPing it, or whether or not we're just going to pick a custodial, or we're going to let them pick for us. So none of those other decisions have to actually be made in order for us to RFP it. We can make those once we have seen the presentations related to the RFP and seen the investment strategies. It's just that if we're going to do that, we need to be moving on that because of the timeframe.
Why would you want Morgan Stanley to choose for us?
I, I did not, I'm not recommending that at all.
As a consideration.
No, that's not our recommendation. That was just listed as an option, because we wanted to give you the options. Our recommendation is for an RFP.
Can you state again your recommendation?
Our recommendation is that we RFP the investments out at this point. It's been over five years, and at this point, we're not necessarily sure we need it in two different companies, to be honest.
That seems the most prudent way. You don't know what you don't know, so.
And we like both of them personally, and that way, we do a RFP is fair, and the first, best one that wins the bid is the one that's awarded the full investment.
The only suggestion I have to it is when we, when we do. Storing the money versus how much is the cost from investing the money. storing the money versus how much is the cost from investing the money. And maybe they can do that, but that transparency is, we have to live with transparency. We'd like to pass those same Ts and Cs on to them.
I think that handout gives you a breakdown of the fees for custodial and also for advisory.
You also find out if there is a cost to transfer funds from Morgan Stanley to one of the other choices that we might have.
We can verify that, but we don't believe.
Buy and sell side.
What cost to transfer the funds? We said we want to go with another, a transaction fee, it might be $150 or something like that, but it's nothing, it's no great fee to transfer. We've already talked with people in the industry, and there's no fee to transfer our funds from one bank to another one.
About the transfer of the investments as well, if we were to leave one to another? So not just where we're storing it, but also the investment group?
We've been, we've done it when we went from fifth third and went to C S McKee and Morgan Stanley. There's no, there's no fee associated with transferring the investment.
Clarification on, at the board meeting, you're just asking whether we want to open this up to an RFP because of the amount of time that's passed and the need to look at what else is out there for us? Is that the?
We need you all to vote at the board meeting between the three options because that's why we gave you, there are three options, we gave you all of them. Our recommendation is an RFP at this point. So that's kind of a reset, refresh, look at it, and then make decisions on how we want to invest going forward. Should the board want to do something different, then obviously we can go in that direction.
I don't know this, and everybody knows I don't know a lot about finances, but I think you've made a good case for your position, and that's where I would be leaning.
Which is why we've been forced to follow it thus far.
Do you have any schedule as to when your current investments are maturing?
That should be included in the monthly financials. It has a breakdown of the investment portfolio, and it shows each portfolio that, you know, each.
No, it does. But I think if you have it on Excel or some, or even your broker can do that for you. Just give the board a presentation of how much matures over the next six months.
Have that information.
Yeah, we have it.
It's readily available.
Yeah. So last year being a deficit year, we managed cash flow, and by knowing what was maturing and what wasn't, that's how we managed cash flow. So we had an idea of what was maturing when, so we knew when additional cash was coming in.
Use that for some example if we do meet.
I have nothing really exciting to add except that I believe going with the P A twenty was pointed out to us during an audit, and that's what generated the new policy. Because the law had changed, auditor advised us, and then we went forward.
That's essentially it, other than answering any additional questions you have related to, related to the recommendation we had. Obviously, you can see the pros and cons in the document. We just wanted to make sure you had opportunity to ask questions before we asked you to vote on it.
These as the only ones for consideration?
We RFP it, it's open to anyone.
Need to interrupt all I did.
We pretty much covered, and you've had a chance to read it, so you kind of already knew.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't necessarily different from what we gave you ahead of time. It was just an opportunity for you to ask questions or us to clarify anything if you needed it.
Good job in preparing for this.
And if you don't have any other questions?
I just ask a, so at the board meeting, we will be voting on how to proceed.
At the board meeting, we, I'm sorry, Patrick was.
Because I heard somebody say February.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was me, I forgot. It's not February, it's January. I jumped ahead. That's my fault.
That's exactly what was behind my question.
No, I'm talking about a week from tomorrow.
Yes, okay. So at that time, we will move you forward. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is an add-on, Judith?
An add-on? I've been called a lot of things in my day.
But add-on.
I didn't call you an add-on. This was an add-on.
This is just, this has been such an informative meeting, I almost feel silly doing this. But we will be proceeding somewhat differently, beginning with the January board meeting in terms of our agenda process. And thanks to Mary, we are able to leave suspend the rules behind us. And I asked Annette for some help, my time has been kind of confined lately, and I asked Annette to contact legal counsel. So going forward, the meeting will be called to order. The role, the pledge will be spoken, and there will be a roll call. Following those three items will be the approval of the agenda. I will ask if there are any changes to the agenda prior to the approval. If there are, and we will then amend the agenda and approve the amended agenda. Public comment is official business and will be included as part of the approved agenda, which is a little bit different from what we've been doing. Should there be changes within the body of the meeting and the agenda, and the approved agenda, we need to call for another motion to change the agenda. It's not, I'm not, I'm making it more complicated than it is, but I think as we go, we will, I think, just become familiar with that process. But it just is a minor thing, but it's going to sound a little bit different, it's going to look a little bit different. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was kind of aware and comfortable. Jonathan? Oh, well, that was a prevailing thought. And we're counting on Mary again, but I think that it just is going to look a little bit different, it's going to sound a little bit different for the one meeting, and by February, we're going to be pros. All good. Are there any other? Steve?
I've been on the board 15 years, and we've talked about this for 15 years, and I'd just like to say better late than never.
And I think that we all agree, and now we are completely in compliance. Should anybody challenge how we do business, we are on solid ground. That's a good place to be, and amen. All good.
We all understand that? Great.
Everybody, and tell it back to me.
Anyway.
I know you'll all help me if I stumble.
So we're getting through a little bit earlier than I earlier projected. Anyway.
Well, before 11.
But anyway, I want to thank you very much. This was a very, this was a good meeting and very informative, and we covered some very important subjects. Thank you, thank your staff. And if there are no other comments, this meeting, oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Meeting is now adjourned.